...at ExeterNH.TV, Apple TV and... Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at ExeterNH.TV, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, ExeterNH.TV, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, as the hour is 6:30 PM, I will call the January 29th, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting to Order. Our first order business hopefully is to go into non-public briefly, after which we will have a board interview and then return hopefully promptly at 7:00 PM for our general meeting. I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A32D.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Chartran.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0, and the board will be moving into non-public.
Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for January 16th, 2024. With the Town Deliberative Session and Town Voting on the horizon this year, a few crucial civic processes have to be completed. Firstly, the Select Board reviews each article proposed for the Town Voting Ballot and decides whether to recommend or not recommend them based on various factors, including legal considerations, financial implications, and community input. Their informed opinion will be listed on the ballot. Following that, the Town conducts a deliberative session. This is an open meeting where residents discuss and potentially amend proposed articles. It's a chance for the community to voice opinions, ask questions, and be informed. After the deliberative session, the articles move forward to be voted on by Exeter citizens on the ballot. This Select Board begins the process just described by deciding on which articles to recommend. Some of the articles discussed were: The new police and fire substation for $17,522,500.
The Town proposed an article last year for the same project. It was a little less expensive last year than it is this year. That's not uncommon with capital projects. They tend to increase in cost as the years go by. And the vote last year was very close. It needed 60% to pass. It fell short by 45 votes in a snowstorm during the town election. So, we brought it back this year for another walk-through and hopeful approval of this article.
I really believe this is the right plan. I embrace this wholeheartedly. I will be voting for it. I urge the citizens of the town to vote for this. We need this facility.
The School Street Area Design/Reconstruction for $6,510,000.
So, it's School Street, Cassuth Street, Union Street. Those are all areas of the town that really need a good amount of water sewer infrastructure and drainage infrastructure improvements. Those are aged lines out there and certainly could use upgrades. They're well past their prime. In some instances, 40, 50-year-old lines, if not older than that. So, one of the major pieces of this project is obviously the 35% debt forgiveness from the NHDES on the sewer portion of the project. That helps us in terms of our sewer rate to keep that stable.
And the 2024 Town Operating Budget for $22,862,862.
The cost to recruit and replace, and then have to recruit and replace again, is far greater than fairly reclassifying wages for long-term employees who have really performed well in Exeter. And I think that the board agreed that retention of our employees that we have in recruitment and keeping the employees that we recruit was important.
So, for those of you that kind of pay attention to what the percentage increases year over year on budget, we made a conscious decision to go to 7.2 because we did not want to have empty departments. We saw a number of surrounding towns that had runs on different departments and their employees, and they were virtually wiped out in terms of having employees. We did not want to face that. Our town employees are very important. They're what make this operation go. They're one of the things that makes this town unique.
The Select Board recommended all but one article. This article was the citizens' petition to make the entire road in Swayze Parkway into a one-way street for motorized vehicle traffic and to add speed bumps.
There was a warrant article two years ago that the Select Board moved based upon public comment, letters, phone calls, emails, both supporting and not supporting the road closure. My colleague, Selectwoman Cowan, made a motion to create a warrant article that was a compromise. And the warrant article called for the road to be discontinued from the Water Street exit to the gazebo. And that's a key word, is discontinuing the road, because it was a Class 5 roadway. Now it's not. That portion from Water Street to the gazebo, even though there's pavement there, it's not a road anymore. Last year, there was a citizens' petition, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going to go off memory, that basically wanted to reverse the warrant article and just put it back to a one-way road. That passed by the voters. But we had review of legal counsel, and if I'm misspeaking, please jump in. Legal counsel reviewed it, and that citizens' petition was not binding because the judge had already discontinued the road. So, there's no road to really reopen based upon the wording of that citizens' petition.
One of the things I've been most impressed by is the way this board is trying to find compromise on this issue. It's remarkable. I am not in favor of this article, and I will not vote to recommend it, and here's why. I believe this article will restrict our ability to find that great compromise, and therefore I would ask the voters not to vote for it because I know this board is going to find a way to accommodate all and create access for all. We will not pursue a solution that excludes people from this jewel of a parkway.
The board finished up the meeting with their regular business. To watch the full meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. As a reminder, the Exeter Town Deliberative Session will be on Saturday, February 3rd, at Exeter High School, with doors opening at 8:00 AM and the meeting starting at 9:00 AM. And the Town Voting Session will be held on March 12th at the Talbot Gym from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The next Select Board Meeting is slated for January 29th. See you there. The Presidential Primary takes place on Tuesday, January 23rd. Here's everything you need to know. The polls open at 7:00 AM and remain open till 8:00 PM. The polling location for Exeter is the Talbot Gymnasium located at the...
One of the things I've been most impressed by is the way this board is trying to find compromise on this issue. It's remarkable. I am not in favor of this article, and I will not vote to recommend it, and here's why. I believe this article will restrict our ability to find that great compromise, and therefore I would ask the voters not to vote for it because I know this board is going to find a way to accommodate all and create access for all. We will not pursue a solution that excludes people from this jewel of a parkway.
The board finished up the meeting with their regular business. To watch the full meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. As a reminder, the Exeter Town Deliberative Session will be on Saturday, February 3rd, at Exeter High School, with doors opening at 8:00 AM and the meeting starting at 9:00 AM. And the Town Voting Session will be held on March 12th at the Talbot Gym from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The next Select Board Meeting is slated for January 29th. See you there. The Presidential Primary takes place on Tuesday, January 23rd. Here's everything you need to know. The polls open at 7:00 AM and remain open till 8:00 PM. The polling location for Exeter is the Talbot Gymnasium located at the... Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for January 8th, 2024. Concerns were voiced by residents regarding transparency on information about the fate of Pickpocket Dam.
I represent a group of concerned residents about the dam. My house is built into the side of the cliff. If this water level goes down, I'm worried what's going to happen. My neighbors are all fishermen, and they paddleboard and they canoe. This is going to have a significant impact, and nobody was notified. The studies that needed to happen came after the decision. So, there's a problem.
I just want to reiterate what the chair has said. For the second time, you have said that the fix is in on this, and it's not. We applied for a grant. We made a decision to apply for a grant that would defray the cost of removal. No decision has been made. We've received no final report. So, I personally would appreciate it if you would stop saying that a decision has been made, because it hasn't.
A warm welcome was given to the new Public Works Director, Stephen Cronin.
I'm very excited to introduce our new Public Works Director who started last week, Mr. Stephen Cronin. Good evening.
It's certainly been an exciting start to my tenure here with the first substantial snowfall of the season this past weekend, but I've been very impressed with the DPW operation as a whole.
Budget talks took center stage as the board deliberated on the fiscal year 2024 operating budget.
I think we have had a fairly lengthy budget process at this point, and we are looking again at a budget that is... The increase is 8.13% over FY '23. One of the central themes of this budget has been the fact that it's a people budget. We have worked hard to retain and incentivize employees through this budget. We're also faced with some fixed cost increases due to inflation pretty much across the board, I would say, in terms of expenses and employee benefits. Health insurance in particular is up 10% this year. So, there are some budgetary challenges.
Discussion was had on restructuring or joining certain committees to address the issue of lack of attendance and not meeting quorums.
We looked at all of the boards and committees, the makeup of them, the vacancies, and we just went through each one and tried to find any committee or board that might need some help in terms of meeting a quorum. We looked at attendance and so forth. Presently, the makeup of the Water and Sewer Committee are seven voting members, including the Select Board member. You would need four people to meet the quorum, and I know I think I can attest to that, that that's been difficult.
It has been difficult.
We talked about two different options, Selectwoman Chartran and I. One was to reduce the Water and Sewer Committee to three people or to decrease it to five members, but increasing the number of Select Board members who could vote to two.
I prefer the latter option. I think three's a tight number, and five is better. And to have two, given the importance of water and sewer for the town and for this board, having two Select Board members makes sense to me.
During committee reports, Selectwoman Julie Gilman spoke about local housing initiatives and broader legislative matters that are being addressed at the state level in New Hampshire.
There's a housing bill that is aimed at stabilizing rent, and it would put the Select Board in charge of stabilizing the rent in the community. I just made the same face. Not everybody did. I don't have any idea where that's going to go. Well, no, I have an idea where that's going to go. Yeah, you do. But somebody's bringing it up, and they're going to keep... I know who it is, and they're going to keep bringing it up.
The meeting then moved on to regular business. To hear the entire meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next Select Board Meeting is slated for January 16th. See you there.
How you doing, Exeter? My name's Kyle Welch. I'm a member of the Exeter Conservation Commission, and we are currently holding a fun contest, trying to get some people to kind of do a little research of what goes on in Exeter as far as the kinds of birds that stick around for the winter. And the contest is called "The Herd Birds of Exeter." In order to participate, you have to download the free app called Merlin onto your mobile device, I guess. And then all you have to do is go out. You can go in your backyard. You can go... We're standing right down here by the boat ramp. You can go into any of the forests that are around town. And when you hear a bird sound, you just start the app, and then... And I got it right here. I'm going to start it up, and you just hit "Sound ID," and then you just have to let it listen to what it hears. And it's pretty amazing because if it hears birds and it can recognize the different types, the different species that they are, and it'll tell you what they are, and it'll give you a little write-up about what kind of birds they are and what they eat and where they live. And it's pretty interesting. I've never really considered myself to be a bird nerd myself, but now since I started doing this, I find that I'll be walking through the woods and I'll hear a bird sound, and I'll say, "Wait a minute, that's not one that I've heard before." And then you bring out the phone and you quickly identify it. Once you identify some different species of birds, if you go to the Exeter Conservation Commission's Facebook page, then you just have to make a comment and just kind of list the birds that you've seen. You get one point for each bird recorded. One of the things that's really fun about this is the winters can be kind of long around here, and maybe you have kids and you're kind of trying to think of something to do, get them outside a little bit. This is a really fun way to get out, and you go into the woods and you don't even have to go far in. You can even do it from the parking lot of any of our conservation properties in town. And it's pretty exciting when you get a new bird that you haven't gotten yet. And we're hoping that people can kind of get really excited about this program.
Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for January 16th, 2024. With the Town Deliberative Session...
Okay, good evening again, and welcome to the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting of January 29th, 2024. The board has been in a non-public session and also in a board interview for the Conservation Commission. We're ready to start our regular meeting. I'd like to start by introducing our board. Selectman Dan Chartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And on Zoom, we have our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening, Molly.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I can't be there in person with you. I am keeping my germs home to myself.
Okay, and are you alone in the room?
I am alone in the room.
Okay. All the way to my left, our town manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have our assistant town manager, Melissa Roy, here as well. Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening.
And my name is Nico Papakostandis. I'd like to say good evening and welcome to those here in the room and certainly those watching on TV. Our next order of business, Mr. Dean, bid awards?
We have no bid awards this evening. We do. We do not have any bid awards. None.
Okay, then moving on, public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with the select board on any comments. We do ask that if your comments are relative to any of the agenda items, you wait until they come up. But if not, please feel free to step up and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Hi, I haven't seen your agenda, but I'm Catherine Edison. I'm at 12 Connie Road in Exeter. And I just had a statement. I'm a member of the Friends of the Exeter River, a group of Exeter and Brentwood residents who are concerned about the select board's recent decisions in support of removal of the Pickpocket Dam. At your January 8th, 2024 meeting, Mr. Chartran had called out one of our members for saying that the dam removal decision had been made. He said that, in fact, the select board voted only to pursue a grant and that no decision had been made on dam removal. A similar statement was made to the Exeter newsletter in a recent article. For the record, the minutes and video of your October 2nd, 2023 meeting made it quite clear that the select board voted unanimously to support dam removal. In fact, the motion to approve moving forward with the grant application had to be withdrawn and restated three times until it satisfied the assertion stated in the minutes that Mr. Vlasic said the motion must include the endorsement of dam removal as their preferred option, which the final motion did. Further, Mr. Papakostandis?
Very good. Thank you.
In your, in your October 16th, 2023 letter to NOAA, the grant application states that the select board unanimously supports removal of Pickpocket Dam. And referring to the Great Dam Project, a very different situation, it further states the select board looks forward to similar success when removing Pickpocket Dam. So it appears, in spite of Mr. Chartran's assertions, that the board has already decided the issue. If we are wrong and the many voices and interests in the community will still be heard and honored, then this board should vote to publicly correct the record on their vote and amend their letter to NOAA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Let's see if there's anyone online. You were mentioned in the public comment. I'll give you the opportunity to respond if you'd like.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Last call for public comment. Great, moving forward, we have no proclamations or recognitions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I interrupt you?
Please.
We do have a bid opening tonight for Linden Street Bridge, so I can pass you the two bids that we received.
Okay.
So, thank you. And I believe we have somebody here to take the bids, who just raised his hand.
I don't have anything to write on.
Do you have a piece of paper to write them down?
Yeah.
One of these, maybe?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. We're on the fly here.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
What is this award for?
This is for the Linden Street Bridge Repair.
This is the one near the McDonald Conservation Land. What's it called? Second Bridge?
This, yeah, we refer to it as the Second Bridge.
Linden Street Bridge Number 081-046.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So I've got a lot to read, ready? Mr. Dean, just for clarification, do you want me to read all of the?
Is there a lump sum number at the end?
Some number at the end.
If there is, I think we can just read that. If there are no alternates on the bid sheet?
There is. Yeah, there's one bid alternate.
I know the engineer who worked on the bid is with us tonight, so he could maybe speak to this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Dean, thank you. So Jason Galant, on behalf of Wright Pierce, there is one bid alternate with the project and the base bid. So if we could read the total and the alternate and just know the contractor, then we'll do the analysis of the bids after.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, this is Madam Clerk, spell it for you. It's E V R O K S Corporation from Tilton, New Hampshire. And the total base bid is $1,129,194. The bid alternate is broken down into two figures. Concrete facing is $102,300. And the mobilization is $15,000.
$15,000?
Yes. The total bid, which is the lump sum and the unit price bids, I'll read that. 1246494.
What was the first? The first number?
It's one?
No, 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 the title of it.
Oh, that was the total base bid.
Okay.
So it's the total base bid, the bid alternate, and then the total bid, which was the lump sum and the alternate bid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The second is from New England Infrastructure, Inc., and they're based out of Hudson, Massachusetts. Okay. The total base bid
Okay.
The bid alternate for complete facing is $126,500.
Okay.
And the mobilization is $10,000. And the total bid, which is the lump sum and the unit price bid,
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to refer the bids to the Department of Public Works for their review and recommendation.
Second?
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Oh, yes.
That's right, that's right, that's right. I take that back. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passed as 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Joanna. Because Selectwoman Cowan is virtual, all votes this evening will be taken via roll call. Which leads us up to our minutes. Did everybody have a chance to review the regular meeting minutes of January 16th?
Mr. Chair?
24, it should be. Yes.
I do have an amendment, and I apologize, Joanna. You have me as not- You have me as not present at the December 28 meeting. I was present, but I recused myself, and that's why I abstained. So whatever amendment will get me in the meeting but not participating. Thank you.
Any other revisions or amendments to the minutes of January 16, 2024? And then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of January 16, 2024, as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passed as 5-0, thank you. I would also now, at this point, under appointments, take, I would entertain a motion to appoint Sean Torres to the Conservation Commission as an alternate with a term to expire April 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just thank you for volunteering.
Perfect, yes. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passed as 5-0. We thank Mr. Torres for volunteering to serve on the Conservation Commission. One last order to take up before we jump into discussion items is the resignation of Lou Hitzro, regrettably from the Energy Committee. Lou has contributed quite a bit, not only to the Energy Committee, but to the Community Power Aggregation Committee. And we thank him for his service. They really did a big, important job that we are going to enjoy moving forward. So we understand his reasons, but we regret his resignation. I know you've worked very closely with Lou.
Yes, it was, he was very instrumental in moving us towards the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, working closely with the newly established or during the establishment of the Coalition. And so sort of guidance from both ends for the Aggregation Committee. You know, our application was, went through pretty fast when I had to go to the Public Utilities Commission. I think that was in part to work that Lou and Cliff and... I can't remember.
Stephanie.
Stephanie, thank you. You know, got prepared for us for our final application. And he will be missed.
He will certainly be missed, and his resignation letter's in the packet. But for all of the kind words that he had for all of the different people he worked with, from the Select Board to the Energy Committee, Kristen Murphy, I think it's reciprocal, and the pleasure was with us, working with Lou and with Renee. So we wish him well and thank him for his service. If the Board will indulge me, before we jump into our discussion item, I believe, are you here for the abatement? Okay, you're way down in the schedule, and I don't really want to have you sit here through the whole meeting, so unless the Board has an issue with that, we'd like to just take that up now and get you out of here, if that's okay? If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Scott Serato.
And Serato.
Okay, good evening. So we've had an opportunity to look through this, but if you wanted to just give us a summary of...
Yeah, so it's my, I have an apartment on Five Chestnut Street. It's a water issue. There was a meeting I wanted to go to in December that they had, but they moved the meeting, so I went away, so I wasn't able to get to that meeting, so... And then it was voted on for the abatement that I asked for. I think the bill was like $19,000. They took off, I think it was $4,000. So we're just trying to see if you could work with us and maybe help us with that bill. It's just a lot of, a lot of money, so.
Okay. So there's 11?
Yeah, 11 units.
Units?
Yeah, there's a girl who lived in this one apartment, and she just wasn't aware of, it was a leaky toilet. She had no idea, I don't know why, but she didn't tell me. But I found out that it was leaking. I went there and I fixed it myself. And then I found out that power was defective, so the water kept running and running and running. Then I got a plumber, and he went into the apartment. We kind of figured out that was the problem. He fixed it. But at that time, the water, it's been running for two months, and I got this crazy bill. And we've owned property, we have three properties in Exeter. We've been paying water bills and our taxes. We've never asked for an abatement ever, so just this one time we're asking for...
Okay.
Because it's so much money, so.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah.
Selectwoman Cowan, I know you're the Select Board Rep to the Water and Sewer Committee. Do you have anything to add before we take questions from the Board?
No, I, I would only add, you know, this is one of those situations where it's so hard and unfortunate. And I do think that the, my recollection of the Water and Sewer Committee discussion here was like, you know, this is a little bit out of the ordinary in taking as much of the, in abating as much of the bill as we did. How, you know, and I, I do completely empathize with the property owners and the, you know, the really unfortunate circumstances that they were in. And that was the decision that the Committee decided to come to.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Are we, are we looking at just the abatement for... Oh, never mind, I'm just rereading the first sentence, and I answered my own question.
Selectwoman Belanger, did you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could hear from Mr. Kelly.
Selectman Chartrand, do you have any questions before we...
I am also waiting to hear from the Chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee.
Mr. Kelly, would you mind coming up and... Adding to what Selectwoman Cowan's already...
I apologize for my delay. I misread the agenda.
No, you didn't. We, we didn't want these folks to have to sit through our meetings, so we...
Very reasonable. And thank you, Molly, for, for stepping in. I don't know exactly how Molly briefed you, but to refresh, the town's policy is that if it's inside the meter, it's 100% the ratepayer's responsibility. Outside the meter is the town's responsibility. In the last four years, certainly since COVID, we have relaxed that a little bit unofficially, such that we understand that accidents happen, and we've been trying to work with ratepayers if there are unexplained and accidental discharges, which in this case, it appeared like there was. Our concern as a committee was that it spilled over into a second billing period. And just looking at the notes, it appears like there was a repair that was made. I'm not sure who made that repair, if it was a ratepayer or if it was the, a plumber. But it, it appears that that did not take. Again, you know, in accordance with the policy, that's not really the town's responsibility. If that, whether it was the homeowner or the plumber making the repair, it is ultimately the homeowner's responsibility. In this case, I think the Committee, you know, because of the sheer volume of leakage, really bent over backwards to try to help the homeowner recommending an abatement of over $4,000, which I've been doing this for a number of years, and that's, I think, a new record. So we tried to...
The amount of the abatement is...
The amount, yeah.
One of the largest you've ever given.
Usually it's a few hundred bucks at most, sometimes less than $100. We would also, you know, just, this is a technicality, but it would sort of support the Committee's decision. We would look at these as two separate abatements, because it's two separate quarters. And as you know from the policy, you know, homeowners get one abatement per 10 years. So if, again, it's a technicality, but in that case, you know, the second one would be denied anyway, because it would be within that 10-year period. And because it is two quarters, we would have to look at them as two separate situations. So as Molly said, it's a very unfortunate circumstance. And I think, I don't know if Russ has articulated that the Public Works Department is very good about setting up payment plans and no interest, and just, we're willing to help out here, so this can drag on for a long time for them to try to get out from under it. But the Committee, I think, was on pretty firm ground here of allowing a 50% abatement where they really didn't have to do that. Understanding, of course, that it seems like it was an accidental discharge, although some would argue maybe it wasn't, because a repair had been made, but then it didn't work, so. Certainly answer any other questions. And again, thank you, Molly, for, for fronting my presentation.
Any questions from the Board of Chair Kelly?
I have a comment.
Please.
I am loathe to see the Select Board take this back. I appreciate the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee does this work, and I'm going to stand with what they decided. But that's me.
Mr. Kelly, in your review of the, of the request, you look back a year and compare the usage? Is that correct?
Right, we get data from the Public Works Department that basically goes back a year, four quarters from when the, when the application for the abatement is potentially requested. And then they, what the abatement is for is for the excess amount used. So we don't give them an abatement of their whole bill. It's just for the excess. So there's still, whatever their standard average usage is, they would still be on, on the hook for that anyway. And what this, what the data here shows is merely the excess usage. And, and again, we're, we were providing both a, an abatement for the water as well as the sewer usage.
And to be clear for the record, the abatement was for the August bill?
Yes, again, you know, somewhat arbitrary, except that August is before November, and so we would take it on the first quarter that the, the excess usage was, was found. So that was, yes, it was for the August bill.
Okay, thank you.
Just maybe to clarify, the, the 50% versus 80% that you see here, again, the policy is that anything inside the meter is the ratepayer's responsibility. During COVID, we came up with a, all right, if it doesn't, if you don't use the sewer, let's say they have a dirt basement or, you know, a stopcock for irrigation for your outside hose gets lopped off from ice falling from a roof or something like that, and the water doesn't go into the sewer, then we provide 100% abatement on the excess for that, because they're not using our facilities. You know, we also then sort of came up with this middle ground of 80%, because there were a lot, during COVID, there were a lot of people, a lot of children bunking in with their parents and vice versa. So there was a lot more usage and a lot more opportunities for accidents to happen. You know, toilet flappers being left on in seldom-used toilets, because now people are living in the basement where they weren't before. So we, we came up with that as a, you know, as a way to sort of meet them even more, you know, understanding that, again, accidents happen. But, but our usual approach to this is to split the, split the responsibility with them. Again, knowing that it's actually 100% responsibility of the ratepayer. We're going halfway and meeting them 50-50.
Sure.
That's where those, that's what those numbers are referred to.
And if I could ask, Mr. Serato, when, when did you first become aware of the issue?
I don't remember the exact date. It may have been in November, I think. Excuse me?
When the bill came?
Yeah, when the bill came.
Okay, so when the August bill came...
Yeah, so it was very high, and so I went through the apartments, and I isolated the problem, and then I fixed it. It was a part of a different broken, and I went to East Harbor, fixed it.
Yeah.
And then apparently that part was defective, so it kept happening, and I didn't know that.
So that was around August, September?
November, September, October 9, 18.
Yeah, the plumber did it.
Thank you.
October 19.
Okay, and then, yeah, okay, so that's right.
Yeah, so the initial attempt at fixing it was 9/18.
Yeah, and then the plumber came in in October.
According to these notes.
Okay.
I was just, wanted to add on this gentleman's, his comment was saying that a lot more usage and there's a lot more opportunity for issues to come about. And just to mention that this is an 11-unit apartment in Exeter, so there is a lot of opportunity, a lot of usage. It's also very low rent. There's a lot of workforce, people who, who live in the apartment. So it's not just absorbing for us, but it's also whether or not excessive costs like this get trickled down to, to the tenants is also an issue that, you know, that we talk about and consider.
Sure, we don't want to do that. No, I understand that.
Yeah. No, I just, it probably works for the cycle of the billing that the apartment didn't notify you in June and October. And it sounds like that was in between when you tried to fix it, and then you had the plumber try to fix it. So I just wanted to be sure that, you know, just getting the bill wasn't the shock, they actually got some heads up, kind of thing.
Mr. Dean, did you have anything to add?
No, I think you have the options in front of you, the 50%, the 80%, the 100%. So for the two billing cycles.
Okay.
For the two or for one?
Well, the, Mr. Kelly indicated that the abatement was on the one, but they had requested originally the two.
Which goes against our policy of one.
Correct.
One per 10 years, is it?
Correct, one in 10 years, yes.
We just want to add that we have three properties in town, so there's 17 units total, and have never come to the town to ask for an abatement. You know, this is very unusual circumstance. It's a young girl who lives in the apartment would not understand housing and how a house functions and works. And so sometimes we're at the mercy of the tenants and their knowledge of how plumbing works or how it works.
No, and I, I understand that. I, you know, again, on the, on the request for the second, I mean, that, that just, our policy is one every 10 years. So again, we're looking at the first abatement request for the August bill. And I'm, you know, it's, it's one of those things, we have a policy. It's one for every 10 years. If we were to, you know, start to wiggle with that, then that, that just, the policy's there for a reason, and I understand. It's a very unfortunate situation, and, you know, I understand your track record with your other three properties. That's all understood, but we also have to keep within our policy, so. And then, went before the Water and Sewer Commission, they abated at the 50%. I agree with Mr. Chartrand. It's one of the highest numbers that we've ever abated. I mean, I would be inclined to agree with what the Water and Sewer Commission, that's why we have them, but I'm, I'm open to suggestions or comments from the other Board members, if they differ.
As tough as these decisions for me personally always are, and they really are. It's just that if we start making exceptions, it, again, I, I I hope you don't take this personally, because I understand how difficult it is, and I appreciate you have apartments that work for us, housing rates, I really do. But we have to be careful about abatements, and, because they have to be made up somewhere. So this is always difficult. But we have the policies and procedures for a reason, and kind of, I feel we need to stick to them, so.
Yeah, we just wanted to come in and just talk about...
And I, I think...
We appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and it is difficult, you know, we understand, and, you know, we're thankful for what you're offering for the community, but the policies are there for, for a reason, and we have to stick by them.
Sure, I understand.
And it's difficult. Mr. Chartrand?
I would say that the workforce housing issue really hits with me, and I would encourage you to, to take up Mr. Kelly's offer of a payment plan so that that doesn't flow down all at once, you know, to rent increases. Because you do have to make it up, obviously, but, but please, take advantage of that opportunity so that you can continue to have these great people. people living in our town while they work in our town. So, thank you.
Mr. Dean, real quick, can you, can you either tell, tell them, you know, who they can contact, or maybe your office can follow up with them?
Yes, we'll follow up with you directly on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And I apologize, I apologize to you. I would have given you a heads up that we were going to move them ahead in the agenda, but I thought you were still traveling. So welcome home.
Buenos noches.
See, the minute you get back in town, we put your rights on.
You are the essential citizen.
Luckily, email works in the Caribbean.
Welcome home. Hope you had a nice time.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, moving back to our discussion items. The first, we have Mr. Bisson on Zoom, and he is going to talk about two amended policies. One is the Town Hall refund policy, and the other is for the field allocation refund policy. And before he comes on, thanks, Bob. I'd like to commend him for looking at this or relooking at this, because I know it's become more of an issue. I think tightening it up is going to just make life a lot easier, not only for his department, but for folks who permit and unfortunately have to cancel for whatever reason. So with that, Mr. Bisson, you look like you're somewhere fun, or is that just a background? Can you unmute? No.
Nope.
Nope.
Back to Molly.
Is there somebody that can help us?
Yeah, Will's back there.
And here it comes.
He's currently unmuted, but no volume, so I can use microphone.
Can you turn your volume up? Look at your volume bar.
Put his microphone, yeah.
Try again. No?
Anyone got his number for his call?
Yeah.
Put him to the microphone.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, the memos were pretty straightforward, unless anybody has any questions?
I don't. I thought it was pretty, they were pretty straightforward, as you said.
You know, essentially, there's a current policy now, where no refunds are, this is, I'm starting with the field allocation.
I can put it on the speaker.
Fine, yep.
All right, Greg, you're a shot.
All right, let me turn on the volume.
Well, we can see you talk and hear you talk from Melissa's phone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, sorry, Mr. Chair. Molly actually was talking too, and you couldn't hear her. So, why I? Yeah, the first memo, thank you, Mr. Chair, we wanted to bring up the Town Hall last week. We actually had a, the first time in our five years, we had a presidential candidate canceled the night before they had an event. And we didn't have a refund policy, so we had to refund all of it after going through all the administration of renting the Town Hall and scheduling with them. So we thought it would be best to have a simple policy where if canceled within 30 days, that they would not receive a refund at all. Prior to that, if they canceled before 30 days, we'd refund them with a $50 administration fee.
I do have one question.
Please.
And I just thought of it just this moment. So depending on the size of the event, the police detail is there, right? Is that a separate fee, or is that included in your fee?
The police detail comes out of the 1,500, for instance, for the presidential candidates.
Okay, that's good to factor in. So, yeah, because they've got people scheduled for this, so we definitely need to think about that, you know, last minute. Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
Greg, while we have you on the phone, do you want to talk about the field allocation?
Yeah, and I, we apologize for that one. The field allocation, as we presented to you a couple weeks ago or months ago, we realized when we adjusted the fees to make it a little more affordable for our local leagues, that we didn't adjust the language in our refund policy. And it was only brought to our attention as all of our leagues are now starting to submit, and they had some questions, and they brought a valid question up here. So for instance, a local league will pay $10 per hour and a half for the rec park and brickyard. Well, you can't get a $25 cancellation fee out of a $10 fee, which didn't make sense. So what we did is we looked at it and said, all right, let's look back, because we want to look and be fair to all tiers of our field allocation, and decided that 50% refund would be, I think, appropriate for anyone that would cancel. And that's, it's very rare that a local league is going to cancel that short of notice anyways. But we wanted to be prepared for the larger, the tier fours, where the for-profit AAU type of programs that are paying $100 for the hour and a half per field. So we wanted to make sure it's appropriate, because if someone books it and then cancels it short notice, it's unfair to those that might have wanted to book it in the first place, and also those that didn't really need it, but are booking it on purpose, just to reserve it. So we wanted to do away with that. So we wanted to be fair and balanced.
Terrific. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bisson? Greg, I've, I've got two motions here we could entertain. Let's stick with the field allocation refund policy. I would entertain a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation new field allocation refund policy of 50% of the fee per day, provided written notice of cancellation is submitted no later than 21 days prior to the field use date.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectwoman Cowan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're hearing her either.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Zoom audio is not coming through anymore.
Aye.
Oh, Nico's got her on the phone.
I have Selectwoman Cowan. She says aye.
Okay.
Molly, if it's okay with you, I'm going to keep you on the phone, because I've got two more motions. I have Selectwoman Cowan here. So that passed 5-0. I would then entertain a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation new Town Hall refund policy of a full refund minus a $50 administration fee, provided cancellation is submitted in writing before 30 days of the event. No refund will be granted if the request is received within 30 days of the event.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Now, Mr. Bisson, hang tight, and Selectwoman Cowan, there's no objection from the board. Greg, do I have a deal for you?
Yeah.
We're going to move to permits and approvals unless the board objects for Mr. Bisson's permit while we have them both on the phone. Is that okay with the board?
Okay, Mr. Chair, as you have a memo in front of you, you'll see now with the acquisition of Planet Playground moving forward. We had, we're going to bring this forward, but four of the, all four of the trees are actually, were on the other owner's property. So now that we're moving forward, we'd like to use RECP Revolving Fund to remove four trees. Last summer, several branches fell off, and this past fall, we had Will Curtis from Curtis Tree examine all the trees, and he noticed a significant amount of rot and insect activity, as well as animal activity, like woodpecker. And especially the ash tree is one that it does show signs of the ashbore beetle, which is hollowing out the tree. So it's imperative that we actually remove them before anyone would get hurt. What is special about these is it requires a large 150-ton crane to reach across the playground to hit one of the far pine trees that's on the opposite end of the playground. So there's only two companies in the local area that actually have those, Mills Tree Service and Seacoast Tree. Both are available ASAP. We just need approval to move forward.
Question. Are we, and this may be more from Mr. Dean, if we approve the removal of these trees, do we need to get authorization from the Tree Committee, given our tree policy, where these trees are on town property?
I think we would need concurrence from the Tree Warden, since they're on public property. But I do not believe we would need Tree Committee concurrence to that. But I would have to double check.
My recollection from the Tree Ordinance is that removal of public trees needed to be run by, that was part of the heart of the ordinance.
Because there's questions about removing and replacing.
Right.
Which is going to be one of my questions there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they'd object to the three pine trees, but.
Will Curtis, actually, Mr. Chair, said the ash is more troublesome because of the ashbore beetle. And I did let the Chair of the Tree Committee know. I'm not sure if she brought it up at the last Tree Committee, as I was unable to make it.
I was there, and that was not discussed. I'd like, and I know, Mr. Dean, you're looking, I'd like to just review the Tree Ordinance. Because I wouldn't want to go ahead and pull the trigger without going through the proper motions.
I have a question. I'm going to wait until Russ reads the ordinance, because one of my questions would be, I don't know if the ordinance is right. So what if there was an emergency, we couldn't take the tree down, and so?
No, I think if there was an emergency.
There is a part in the question. Right, that was, and that, I didn't want to repeat too much longer.
No, if the ash tree is diseased and poses a danger, and if the three pines are near it, then all of a sudden, the pines become dangerous. I mean, I think that would, I mean, I would feel comfortable facing the Tree Committee with that.
So I think I have the answer for you, Mr. Chair.
Wonderful.
Tree Committee consultation, a significant public tree defined as having a diameter larger than 20 inches DBH may be removed only following consultation with the Tree Committee, and only after the opportunity for public input at a Tree Committee meeting, except where delay in the removal of the tree would pose, excuse me, pose an imminent threat to public safety or property.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that move forward tonight. Any objection from the board?
No.
Any other questions for Mr. Bisson? I'm also comforted in that Mr. Bisson spoke with the Chair of the Tree Committee, so at least she's has some knowledge. So I'm very comfortable entertaining a motion at this time to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $7,750 from the Recreation Revolving Fund to enter into a contract with Seacoast Turf Tree Care to remove four trees from around Planet Playground for the safety of our residents and patrons.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Molly, what was, what do we have in that? Do we have money in that fund? What do we have?
In the revolving fund, there's over $100,000, isn't it?
Just checking.
$121,000, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisson. We have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Greg, thank you very much. Thank you for bearing with us through our technical difficulties. And Selectwoman Cowan, I'll take you off the phone. We will need you later.
Okay, I can call you back if, somehow the Zoom meeting starts working.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
Bye.
Mr. Dean, you have an exciting idea that you'd like to share with us about creating a new committee, despite the fact we've got so many vacancies we can talk about later on in our other committees, but.
True. Yes, understood. And this, this committee actually would be charged with reviewing the town's exemption and credit programs, the core element being to maintain fairness within the system. And this was actually something that the Master Plan recommended be addressed in Parts 5A and 5B of the Grow section of the Master Plan. So the proposal is to create a committee. This would be a five-member committee to include one Select Board member, and this committee would review the town's current exemptions and credits. And then the committee could make recommendations to the board, and by extension, the town, because some of the credits and exemptions, actually probably all of them, have some element of a town vote attached to them to make changes, and would require that. So there are several items to consider, and then in recent years, including expanded veterans' credits. So there has been legislation in the last five to seven years where the veterans' credit programs have been re-reviewed by the state legislature and expanded in nature, and the town hasn't yet adopted any of those updates. But certainly, we would be candidates to do so. So a committee could analyze the data on that, and also, and make recommendations for the board to consider. So I put in my memo to you that if successful, the committee would recommend any needed changes for the 2025 town meeting. And if the committee is successful, it could exist as a standing committee, and it could make recommendations annually to the board and to the town on these programs. And I listed most of the programs, if not all of them, in the exemption and credit areas. This includes the elderly exemption, the veterans' credits, all types, RSA 79E, which I know the Housing Advisory Committee looked at. And actually, the Housing Advisory Committee would play a role in this as well, because they have been charged with looking at things like the elderly exemption, the disabled exemption, the blind exemption, the deaf exemption. We also have a solar exemption, a wind-powered energy exemption. We haven't adopted that or had actual use of that yet, but we have it on the books. The wood heating energy systems exemption, the electric energy, excuse me, storage systems exemption, and then the renewable generation facilities and electric energy systems exemption. So there are a lot of programs that would fall under this committee's auspice to be able to review and make recommendations on.
Selectwoman Belanger?
So, I spoke with the Chair of the Housing Advisory Committee. We have to work on the makeup of that committee, because right now, we have Rocking and Planning Commission, but it says Tim Roach, and, but it doesn't say or a designee. So technically, Victoria can't vote. So we really don't have a voting quorum. So one of the things, I spoke with Lindsay Sonnet, the Chair of the Housing Advisory Committee, to get her take on this. So a few things were thrown out. One, depending what this board wants to consider, that it would come back to the Housing Advisory Committee, because it is part of their charge, before it comes to the Select Board, so that they can weigh in. And hopefully, we would have a quorum by that point. I mean, the others, and, and we're going to look at the charge and this year's work ahead for 2024 next Friday.
Okay.
Okay, so that's something else to consider. And then a third is that, you know, if we need to hold that charge when we evaluate what the Housing Advisory Committee mission and stuff, we need to, we do need to look at the makeup. So we might want to consider that. And again, the committee will, it's an advisory committee, and they'll, they can discuss it next Friday, depending on what this board's conclusion is.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
That's very helpful. Selectwoman Gilman?
Well, speaking from the state end, exemptions and credits are changed every year. So, excuse me, one thing to look at, and I know we have a lot of documentation here about the various elderly, exemptions, elderly exemptions, as Mr. Dean went through. Some of them need to be adopted by town vote, some of them are just. to be adopted by town vote. Some of them are just almost policy. Some of them need the amount that's credited or exempted as a town vote. For example, with the elderly exemptions, they're, the state sets the age groupings. There's three, it starts at 65, and then it's 80-plus, and there's something in the middle. But the town voted on how much to give as an exemption for each of those. And a couple of the things that Mr. Dean read off haven't been, as he said, adopted by the town, and there have been some additions. I have some information about the various veterans' credits that would be part of this. I want to say it doesn't need to meet that often, maybe once a year, but it should be done in August or September, when, before legislation gets submitted to the State House. And then maybe afterwards, so you can make a recommendation of whether or not the bill is good for a community or is, would hamper a community.
So I'm going to hold my thought. Selectwoman Chartrand?
I don't have any comment at this point.
I don't know if Selectwoman Cowan has any comment.
Oh, I can...
Okay, I heard you. I think you said you were fine? Okay.
We can barely hear you, but we can hear you.
So if I understood, both of you, and I'll start with Selectwoman Belanger, if I understood you correctly, your suggestion is we kind of look at the Housing Advisory Committee first, the makeup of that committee, and how maybe we could...
You didn't take that out?
Work with that a little bit, because you're already doing some of the work.
Right, and it seems silly to me, right, and to Lindsay, actually, for the, it to be part of the charge for the Housing Advisory Committee, but then having it be part of another committee? Two, it just seems like it's crossing lines. However, my understanding is, I think, maybe different than Julie's understanding of what this is going to do. This would, they would meet, how often did you plan on it?
So I think, because of the variety of exemptions and credit programs that are in, on this list, I really think that this committee would meet once a month to start, to do, to do a dive into these different programs and understand them all, because I think there is a learning curve that will, will need to be adhered to. And then, and then after that, I included a lot of data, as you know, in the packet, with all the different towns and the different levels of exemptions and credits on certain programs. And I think that this committee will have to review those in context and use those to make recommendations back to the Board and ultimately, maybe the town, if the Board is in agreement with that. So I think there's a lot of work to be done. I think the exemptions and credits on this list are pretty varied in type. The veterans' credits are a lot different than the elderly exemption, as an example, which is a lot different than the RSA 7281 exemption, which is a valuation exemption off construction, new construction. And that can be adopted by a community, but we have not adopted it. So there are different pieces of the puzzle here that really need to be reviewed in, in total. And I understand what Nancy is saying about the Housing Committee's role as well.
Yeah, and we've looked at these in the past, but in our fairness, we haven't gone back to them for a bit. So, you know, that's why I'd like to get the Housing Advisory Committee together and talk about it a little bit, but can I just follow up on more questions? Will you forget yours if I say that?
I know. I might, but I'll, go ahead.
So if they met once a month, and this was to just pull data, make recommendations to the Select Board to see if we want anything that needs to be put on as a warrant article for the town to vote on, but would their role at all be vetting any, like, exemptions or anything like that?
No, you mean individual applications? No.
No, this is just policy.
This is, this is policy and amounts, and looking at it in the big picture.
Yes, thank you.
If the town adopted a certain credit program or exemption program, what would the cost be to the town, and whether that cost can be sustained in the structure that we have?
Right.
You know, that, that is something that, with the veterans' credits as an example, we have not looked at in full as of this time. So we don't really know exactly what those costs look like on paper.
And just to kind of reiterate, I think that the Housing Committee needs to give the input on the things that affect the cost of housing. So there's no problem. We'll take input from everyone. Well, we, I'm saying, I'm already on it, but. And, and, Mr. Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we also adopt 162K, which is the business tax?
For the Tef district?
No, over near, well, I thought it was over, it was for, maybe it was for the construction on, I don't know, I don't look it up. But I know there's another one that has to do with building housing, or reusing housing stock for something new.
We have preservation easements on the books, I know, 79E.
Yeah.
79A, sorry about that, 79A.
Okay, well, there's another one, but that would be part of the study.
So this list is not all inclusive yet?
No, there are a few more.
Thank you. I couldn't speak earlier, because I was having a little trouble post-cold, so I apologize for that. I think this committee is a great idea. Obviously, it needs to take input from all, all places, including the Housing Advisory Committee. But to have a separate committee like this, take a look at our exemption programs, is a wonderful idea. And the reason for that is, anytime we give a particular group of property owners an exemption, all the other citizens in this town pick up the slack and pay for that exemption. So looking at it holistically is a wonderful idea, because we may have stumbled into, like, laying off exemptions that we don't want to do any longer, or that may not be a good idea if, if we're trying to skew the age of the town younger. You know, there's all kinds of reasons to give all kinds of exemptions, and I'm not commenting on any particular exemption. I'm a big fan of the veterans' exemption, for example, because it's, it's capped at an amount, and it recognizes the valuable contributions of those folks and the service they've given our country. So to have a committee set up, to really look at this holistically, is a wonderful idea, because not all these exemptions were kind of put together holistically.
Right.
They were individual initiatives, often citizens' petitions historically, that did not consider how much tax obligation was being laid off on the other citizens of the town. It was just kind of pursued, in some cases, as a way to get out from under taxes by certain groups, as I recall, going back to the 90s. So this is a great idea. I'm all for it. Obviously, we want participation and input from not just the folks that are on the committee, but organizations like the Housing Advisory Committee, because it definitely impacts your charge. Selectwoman Belanger, but this, as a standalone committee, is a brilliant idea. Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes. Exemptions and abatements, et cetera, and credits come through my committee at the State House. And I will say that one member of the committee put his foot down and said, there will be no approval of exemptions anymore, or not this year. That's his opinion, because of that very reason, that we keep exempting another user group and then spreading, or making a smaller pool for our property taxes. We have yet to discuss any of those, so we'll see what happens. But just so you know, somebody's of a like mind, but didn't come off as nicely as you did.
Well, it's just, to look at this holistically is really important, and not all of these evolved holistically.
Right.
So that was my point.
Yep.
And I'm all for this committee, because it's a chance to kind of look at the whole playing field, and not just an individual anti-tax initiative from the 90s.
I just have one more question, if I could, Mr. Chair. Did you consider three members instead of five? Just because we have so many vacancies right now, are you that optimistic that you can find five? Well, it's five members, who includes those four members?
Right, four, four to recruit, yeah, yeah.
I would think that there would be folks interested.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe, we may have, I'll call it sort of in-house people that are serving maybe on other committees that would be interested in this topic as well, might be willing to do double duty on, on a committee of this type. So, just a thought.
Definitely need the taxes, deputy tax assessor in on it.
Yes, assessing would play a role in this committee as well.
But I was going to ask, you know, obviously, there's going to be multiple players working with the committee.
Yeah.
Who would be the designated staff person, though?
I actually envisioned for the start of this committee, that I would be the lead representative for it from the staff. But obviously, the assessor, we would look at the assessor's office as being a representative, an important representative to the, to help the committee along as well.
No, absolutely. But I think it's always easier when you've got one go-to, when there's one, you know, designated, and you would assume that.
Yes.
Okay. And I, I agree with Selectwoman Chartrand, I agree with both Selectwoman Belanger and Gilman, and also remembering, too, that, you know, this was included in the master plan, so it's something that folks in town have been encouraging us to consider. So here we are. You're optimistic that we can recruit four volunteers fairly quickly?
I think if I put it on the...
Yes.
On the news, of a distribution, then we will be.
Okay. I think, I think the topic is a, an attraction to people. I think when they see this kind of issue being put forward via committee, they'll want to participate. And I know the local media is here as well, so they can help us get the word out, perhaps, and let people know that the committee exists, and we can move it ahead.
Great. And it's an advisory committee, what's your envision of a title?
Advisory to the Select Board.
So Tax, Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Is what you're envisioning?
That's, that's the name.
Okay, reporting came up.
Select Board.
Yes. Appointed by the Select Board.
Correct.
And five members. Terms or no terms?
I would suggest terms.
Staggered terms?
Yes.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan, did you have anything to add or ask? Great.
And if the Board knows which board member is willing to serve, we could take a sign-up tonight.
We could, but where we're going to be reorganizing?
Yes.
Probably best we wait till April. That doesn't mean you can start, stop recruiting.
Right.
I would be happy to do it, depending on the day we suggest, just because it's direct communication with the work I do at the state.
Okay. And then for those that couldn't hear, Selectwoman Cowan agreed with the idea. She thought it was great. There are no other questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to implement a Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee to be made up of five voting members, with one of those voting members being a Select Board representative to serve staggered terms.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
The Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
And our last discussion item is Selectwoman Gilman, wearing her hat as State Representative.
Yes, there's a very important bill, I think, being heard in the Senate Judiciary Committee on Thursday at 10:00 a.m., and it's Senate Bill 533, and it has to do with a, has to do with quarums of committees present, or physical presence of a quorum of a committee, commission, et cetera. The bill, there was one similar proposed last year, which failed in the Senate. This one has changed it quite substantially, only in making it shorter and simpler to read. But the gist of it is that, as we have tonight, Selectwoman Cowan participating remotely, what this allows for every, all but two people from the Board need to be in the place noticed for the physical location. So this would, this would actually, I think, make meetings easier, because, you know, it's all, it's all recorded, everybody can participate in Zoom. And one of my observations was that we had more people watching us via Zoom, the Select Board meetings actively, than we have. Right now, we have zero. But we would have, you know, 15 people who would want to raise their hand and make a comment. Also, my, and this is anecdotal, but we can try to find the records. The town clerk was, doesn't have a lot of the periods that I was asking for, but before the governor's... Emergency order, thank you, to shut down public spaces and, and Boards and committees can meet remotely. Before that, we were struggling with membership on, on committees and commissions, et cetera. But during the shutdown, and people could, could participate remotely, we had an increase in the volunteerism, because people could stay home with their kids, they didn't have to pay for babysitting for a volunteer position. Now, the town is run by volunteers, essentially, and, and we could have two members of the same family on different Boards, and, and I, you know, the, I saw the participation increase.
Oh, absolutely.
And then, once the emergency order was lifted, and the virtual became, went back to its original, where you can have one, maybe two people, it just fell apart, and I saw basically the younger people drop off. But now I'm seeing, on Boards that I'm on, the older people don't want to drive at night, so we have to change the time of the meeting or not have those people volunteer, and, and, you know, they want to. So, you know, weather conditions, all sorts of things that would be healed by being able to be remote and have not a quorum of the committee present, but at least a representative, representation of the committee present in, in the noticed location. So this is being sponsored by myself and a couple others from Exeter, plus our state Senator Deborah Altschuler. And it's being heard, like I said, Thursday morning at 10:00. I cannot appear personally, because I will be in Rep's Hall, making other decisions. So I meant to have a letter for you to sign as, as representing the position of the Select Board, if, you know, we were in agreement. But I am going to submit one as a representative.
I, I speak for myself. The pandemic, the emergency order, really accelerated the inevitable in, in some ways, and we've seen that the opportunity to meet in a hybrid sort of way enhanced democracy in terms of folks being able to participate in meetings. You're absolutely correct. Our attendee list, we'd have 10 or 15, sometimes 20 folks. In terms of people serving on committees, I think a hybrid model is, is most inclusive for younger folks that have small children, folks that have mobility issues, or maybe older folks that are not able to drive at night. And you know, from years of me talking directly with you about this, how disappointed I was when the emergency order was lifted, because our, our neighbors in Massachusetts, to this day, still meet hybrid, because they found how successful it was for participation, for democracy. And again, I'll say it again, that the pandemic, the emergency order that came of it, accelerated the inevitable in some states, and unfortunately, we're not there yet. But thank you for continuing to work on this, because this is something you've worked passionately on for a number of years, and anything I can do to support you, I'm happy to do.
I would ask everyone to reach out to your... I would ask everyone to reach out to your board members, especially the ones who have dropped off, and go to the House website, and there's a remote sign-in for the bill. Or actually, go to the Senate website for the remote sign-in on the bill. It's still under the General Court, but select the Senate tab. And, uh, you'll be asked to enter your name, where you're from, and, and I, and click the button that says I support the bill, um, and then, uh, submit it, and it will show up in the, um, the bill information, you can look at who's, who's signed in. So each committee, uh, has that information, that there are, you know, 30 people in favor, and two opposed, or something like that.
Great.
So the more we can get, um.
So I have a question for you. You said you were going to have a letter ready, but you, you weren't able to get to that. Is it possible that we can task the town manager to draft just a very simple one line? Of course, if we all agree that we support this, um, that just says the Exeter Select Board supports Senate Bill 533, and we can designate him to sign it?
Yeah.
Is that possible for turnaround?
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't want to assume.
And if you want to take a vote, uh, to support the bill, uh, I think that's even more, you know, that's, that's something that can be written into a letter that says essentially at your meeting of X, XYZ, the board took a vote to support Senate Bill 533.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, I want to thank you, Julie, for your work on this. Thanks Senator Altschuler as well, and the other sponsors. To move towards hybrid models of meeting will allow more of our citizens to participate as volunteers. It'll increase the vibrancy of our town government, and we should absolutely be in support of this bill. So, I'm in favor of that.
I have to say, I was very much invigorated by having a full body of people to discuss a topic.
Absolutely.
When, instead of being disappointed that we don't have everybody there. And so, that's why, part of why I'm really passionate about this, with so many more opportunities. And, and as you said, it's, you know, democracy in action, so.
Right.
So yes, I would move to, um.
Can I just ask of Selectwoman Cowan if you have any other thoughts?
Sorry.
No, I just also really appreciate this, um, I appreciate you submitting this bill. I appreciate my fellow board members, um, in their vote for me. They're, uh, thank you in advance for your help to support this measure, but I do, you know, I am also grateful, I think it's incredibly important to have a diversity of views as we are discussing important topics. I think we are, um, we really miss out when we require, um, in-person only volunteering, and really, really appreciate this.
I will have to point out that the bill does say whoever's remote needs to be seen and heard, and be able to be seen and heard. So, you will be on camera.
And I, and I think that being said too, that if this, if this passes, I'm going to be optimistic, and hopefully when it passes, um, and we have that opportunity, we can then maybe look at the budget to enhance our technology.
Yes.
Because we didn't, we didn't have the.
Still having glitches.
We didn't have the glitches so much back when we were more used to, or more accustomed to having that, so. Sure, that's easily fixed.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think you need to make a motion.
I will. Mr. Chair, I would like to move to, uh, I don't want to say direct, but to ask, authorize the town manager to write a letter of support for Senate Bill 533 to the Senate Judiciary Committee, um, endorsing the support of the, uh, select board. Ah, Senate, relative, okay, let me amend that, Senate Bill 533, relative to the physical quorums at public meetings. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And the clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, the motion passes 5-0, thank you very much. Representative Gilman? While you have the floor, we will turn this over to abatements, veterans credits, and we have an elderly exemption this evening as well.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 72, Lot 106, in the amount of $1,194.39 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, the motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 70, Lot 15, uh, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 82, Lot 7, Unit 4, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 90, Lot 18, Unit 2, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 85, Lot 68, in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those, Madam Clerk?
Selectman China, Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
And I move to approve an elderly exemption for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 806, in the amount of $152,251 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those, uh, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? Uh, Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
Mr. No, um, no, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, in case the people were having trouble, uh, hearing Selectwoman Cowan's responses, she did say aye to all of them, as we did.
She did, thank you.
Although you said 5-0s.
Okay, we have already reviewed the permits and approvals this evening, so, Mr. Dean?
Yes, so, a few things tonight, one is that the, uh, a reminder for everybody that the deliberative session is this coming Saturday, starts at nine o'clock at the high school auditorium, and doors will open at eight o'clock for people who want to come early. Uh, we did post the warrants today, so everything is all set on that front. The postings of the warrants were also done online, and we'll have our explanatory fact sheets ready to go probably by tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest. So all the information that people need, they, they will have in their hands, and available online as well. And, uh, also, we've been working on other things, the master meter residential issues that were brought up from the water sewer study, we did get a proposal to look at those, so that is in. We also responded to the pickpocket dam 91A request from Attorney Robert Span, uh, so that has been fulfilled. Uh, we've been working on the town report and pulling that together to get it to the printer, and I wanted to thank Pam McElroy, uh, for all of her work on that. She has put in a lot of hours on it, and, uh, as usual, it looks really great, so, she did a great job. And we're continuing to recruit for positions, and we're getting applications in, which is good news. And hopefully, we can get some candidates from, from those applicants that we're getting, so that's good news. Uh, the groundwater letter of intent with PEA is finalized, so that's in the hands of the trustees of PEA, and we're going to wait to hear back from them. Hopefully, all goes well, we can get out there and do some pilot testing here pretty soon, on the Drinkwater Road site that we've been looking at. And then the town hall Zoom meeting, we had a Zoom with Assistant Town Manager Roy, Julie, and the consultants for the town hall project that are working on that. So that is complete, and the next step for that is to have a stakeholders' meeting, so we'll need to organize that. And then, uh, the board authorized me to sign the purchase and sale for Planet Playground, that's been done.
Great.
So, uh, that, that is all set, and, in the hands of the legal people, and we need to schedule a closing. And the board will have to do a 4114A process as well, so we'll schedule that for an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
To, to get that done. And I'll close by saying, the Town and City Magazine, I reached out to Tim Fortier at the magazine, and they are going to do a profile of Renee Allen for their next issue.
Great.
So, Renee was a great candidate to put forward, so, um, they're going to do that. And also, Lang Plummer from the planning board, and Laura Davies from the zoning board has.
Great.
Is working on a questionnaire as well.
All right.
Yeah, good stuff.
That's fantastic news.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank you and Assistant Town Manager Roy, Mr. Bissong, again, that Planet Playground, um, is just, that's.
It was.
A really, um, important piece of property for us.
Thank you, thank you very much, and it was a great team effort by all involved.
Makes us all more comfortable moving forward for our plan to replace it?
That's right.
Now that we roll.
We actually own the property, correct. Is that the conclusion of your?
Yeah, I think I, one more thing, while we're keeping tabs on the Siphons project, 388 linear feet.
Great.
That's where we're at, uh, we're drilling, the project's on schedule. Uh, it, it has slowed in the last day or so, uh, but it is still moving ahead, so I wanted to.
Whether related, or?
Not sure if it's weather-related or equipment-related at this point, so, but we'll keep you posted.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
If I may, you mentioned the deliberative session, and I know the town warrant is in our packet under correspondence, but if the board will indulge me for a few moments, I'd like to, um, just kind of go over some of the articles to get back to the moderator. Thoughts of the board, I don't think it's imperative that the board speak to each article, there are some that are just incredibly self-explanatory. But I, I did circle a couple that I think that we should talk about tonight, maybe taking some ownership in presenting. If we could take a few minutes to do that, that'd be great. I'd already, um, indicated to the town manager that I'm interested in presenting Article 4, more so just to introduce, we're going to show the, the video. Town moderator has agreed to show the video that we previously, uh, displayed in multiple places, but we've got one, two, four other bond articles.
I'd be happy to speak to Article 5.
Okay.
I missed four, okay. So I, I'm sorry, I was shuffling through because I had closed it, so, is anyone speaking to four?
I said I did.
You said you, I, that's what I missed.
Yep.
All the shuffling through papers. Okay.
So we have Webster Avenue Pump Station, Surface Water Treatment Plan, and the excess construction proceeds.
I, I'll do seven and eight if you feel.
Seven and eight?
Okay, and what was the other one, the Webster Pump Station?
Yep.
Okay. Molly, do you want to take that one, or?
I do have others, too.
Yeah, and that's how I feel, just, I mean. Sorry.
Is anybody?
How I, you know, but I will just fill in with whatever I'm assigned to, how's that, and?
Are you comfortable with Article 6?
Sure.
Okay. And then Russ, you usually handle the budget, operating water and sewer?
Mm-hmm.
And of course, the board will be there, um, particularly, particularly with the operating budget, should we be required to also speak to some of the increases, I think all of the board would feel comfortable doing that. What about the Planet Playground? Article 13, I thought that might need in some introduction?
Does Molly want that one, doing on Parks and Rec?
Okay, all right, I'm going to put Molly down for 13. And I, and I'm happy to step back, I put myself, I penciled myself in for Article 20 on the investment services for the capital reserve funds, only because I've been working with the trustees, and I feel fairly comfortable speaking to that, unless there's any objection?
No.
Okay. The Town Solar Array Revolving Fund?
I can. I can take that one, since it's an energy-related thing.
Okay. And then, um, Article 22 and 23, respectively, of the two committees, that I didn't know if we wanted to speak to those briefly, to just explain to folks what we're trying to do. Let that be helpful. Okay.
I'll do the Heritage Commission, I can.
You want to do that one?
Yeah.
Molly, would you do the water and sewer advisory?
I'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others that folks feel passionate about speaking to? Russ, do you think that covers that?
Yeah, that should be good.
Okay, and I will send those in advance to the moderator, because I know there's always some confusion, or pause, I should say, when, after she reads them, so. All right, that's great. Select Board Committee reports, let's start down here.
And I have one.
Okay.
Actually, can I plug one thing about the deliberative session?
Please.
Anybody on social media, there is an event that was started, um, so please share it to try to get the awareness, a reminder to people that it's a Saturday, that's always helpful, I think. Okay, I had one meeting since our last meeting, and that was last Thursday, January 25th. The planning board, we caught up in several meeting minutes, and we did the final public hearing on the amendments, um, the zoning amendments that are listed. So one is amend Article 4, District Regulations, Section 4.2, um, the Schedule 1, and it passed. So if anything had changed from the first public hearing, we would have run out of time, but nothing changed, so we were fine with that. And then the second one was to amend Article 6.19, the mixed-use neighborhood district. And again, that, that passed, um, and the only other item that came up was a field modification that our town planner takes care of, and it was, um, someone hit ledge and decided to move their, their drainage system a little bit, so that was something that could be taken care of by the cleaning department. That was it for me.
Great, thank you very much, Selectwoman Gilman?
I had the, um, Energy Committee, the said goodbye to Lou Energy Committee meeting, and our new, uh, volunteer came right along at the right time. We really just went over the calendar of, of events, you know, just trying to reorganize with, uh, having, um, Renee leaving, and she had been driving a lot of the, the activities that we do, so we just went over the calendar of, of activities we want to keep doing, like the, um, Electric Vehicle Day, and, um, excuse me, being represented at the Aloy Festival, uh, things like that. We also reviewed the Window Dressers Program that we're looking into for, um, uh, making sort of indoor storm windows, involves, we're talking about, um, we're going to make a decision by June, I think, whether we want to do the program this year, um, because we were constructing it, and constructing or getting the orders and constructing in October. It will involve a lot of volunteers to do the work, to build and to install, and to measure. But we really need like four volunteers to head up the organization of the different units that we need to have, um, as far as, you know, people go out and measure, people that construct, people that install. And there's also a benefit, too, that, um, there is a set amount to pay for each window, or you can volunteer to pay more. We have to give, I think, 10% of the work that we do has to go to low and moderate income for free. So there's a, um, a benefit, so there's a benefit to, uh, participating this in different ways, not just in saving energy, but also helping out with other folks. And the other thing was, uh, Heritage Commission met, and we reviewed the warrant article. the warrant article, and everybody said that was fine. We looked at our rules of procedure, we needed to change one section that would allow us to make more amendments as necessary, such as the number of people on the board, and so, the rules of procedure right before that had been, we need to have a public hearing, you know, posted in the newspaper, and we took that out because we're not a regulatory board.
Yep.
So, really, that was over requirement for, then we also talked about changing our monthly meeting dates, and the consensus was 10:00 AM on the third Wednesday of every month. I had some reservations only because I think it limits participation from a different generation than that's currently represented, or a different demographic than what's currently represented, but, you know, that was the majority, so, there it is.
Great, thank you.
Go over the state stuff if you want to, maybe under correspondence.
Okay. Selectman Chartran?
I did attend one meeting, Mr. Chair. I attended a January 17th meeting. It was kind of a joint meeting of the chairs of the Energy and Sustainability Advisory Committee. In the room was Kristen Murphy, Town Manager Rustine, the two chairs, and myself, and there was a kind of a feeling out, decision to maybe go slow, put together a joint meeting in February where folks could talk about that, so.
Okay.
It was discussed, but nothing was decided.
Thank you. Sounds like some progress?
Hey, we're meeting. We're going to have one joint meeting. We all agreed to one joint meeting.
At least.
That's one step in the right direction. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Selectwoman Cowan? Okay. I had a Swayze Park trustee meeting the day after we met last, and Jennifer Martell was here to go over the proposed plan that she'd come up with that was in our packet. So, that was just a presentation of that. The trustees also spoke of the overflow, the flooding downtown, and just how we need to really start paying attention, because this isn't a problem that's going to be going away. So, we spoke about that a little bit generally, and recommendation was made to consider maybe having life jackets down on the parkway, so, more on that to come. In our packet also, we have a list of all of the committees, boards, and commissions, and whose terms are expiring, so if everybody wants to review those at your leisure, your respective committees.
Yep.
And Mr. Dean, email notifications are sent out to those whose terms are expiring?
Yes, we're in process on that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, correspondence. Did you want to go first?
Uh, yes, hold on a second.
I have a couple things, but I want you to go first.
1297, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to go through the things that had happened in my committee at the State House, because in, under correspondence, we have the New Hampshire Municipal Association list of things that should be watched, or that happened that were good or not good for a municipality. Speaking of tax exemptions, one of the, the first one we heard and decided on, and this is just at my committee, not at the full House floor, was relative to enabling municipalities to adopt a homestead property tax. And it sounds really enticing for property owners, because it could be up to $120,000 off your valuation per owner, so, they say spouse in it, but it, we're going to try to change it to partner, or, there's a better word. The committee decided to put it to interim study because it's poorly worded, and it's another tax exemption that we have to consider amongst that whole list that we already got tonight. The next one was relative to property tax exemptions for certain disabled veterans, and this, there's two for disabled veterans, some involve the amount of disability that they have. Neither of those, or both of those were passed. I'm sorry, the first one, which had to do with the particulars are houses that have been adapted by VA loans or grants, that those, get some kind of exemption for that amount of money that was changed. But that passed on 190, and then the other one, I quite frankly can't remember what the, what this was doing for a waiver from property taxes for disabled veterans, but it did not pass. And then, there was one about public notice of zoning boards of adjustment hearings, and it was a very confusing bill. It was not written very well, but I think it was going to either force the notification to be longer or shorter, since we couldn't figure it out. We just said, no, thank you very much. There was one for a local tax cap, which does not affect us, and it was cleared up with an amendment, so that it was trying to get bonds included into the tax cap figure, so that whatever you're paying for a bond would actually have to, you know, come out of your operating budget or something. But that was changed with an amendment, and it passed 18 to 1. Live streaming all properly noticed meetings and hearings elected and appointed municipal bodies. That is going to have, that's going to interim study because there were questions about the capability of towns being able to catch up to our more robust system that we have, even given tonight's technical difficulties. We do have really a robust system of where you can watch movies, where you can watch meetings, and how you can watch meetings, and, you know, how to participate, and live streaming versus recording, et cetera. And then, there's another one had to do with records retention, and this has to do with the Secretary's, or Attorney General's office, and having local, they have a local records manager, and so, all of our records from all of our different committees, commissions, Planning Department, whatever, can be uploaded to a server on this local, what did I just say?
Uploaded on the server?
Yeah, on the server for the local public documents. And we sending that to interim study because it would require over $150,000 to upgrade their equipment, possibly hire another person, but the idea is that we already have this person, this local documents administrator, and the idea was, well, we don't need to keep all the stuff here, we'll just send it up there, and if somebody's got a question, they can just look it up on the state. So, it's going to judiciary, even though we opened the hearing on it, this is a funky thing, and I don't understand why it's going this way. Judiciary apparently has a similar bill, but it's not quite similar, so they're going to look at ours and maybe adopt the language into their bill. So, that's an unusual maneuver. Let's see, here, this was a relatively interesting bill, it was relative to the indemnification of municipalities adopting policies to address homelessness, and this is going to interim study. And what it does is provide, if a municipality has a place for someone who's, has no housing, or, you know, otherwise homeless for a short duration, and maybe even a longer one, but the municipality has a space where these folks could go, and maybe, and stay for the given period of time that we may recommend, that we would not be, have the liability insurance with sort of a, take it at your own, you know, caution. I don't, I don't know how it would, well, it was a very interesting idea anyway, for there are places with lots of empty municipal property, I guess. There was one requiring large parking lots to have solar power canopy, and that did not go through because it was unclear whether they meant new construction or existing, and there would be a real big problem if it was with existing parking. And the perennial prohibitive, relative prohibiting municipal inspections of owner-occupied units of multi-unit housing. And somebody doesn't want to get out of their apartment being inspected like every other person. Some cities have an annual inspection, like a health inspector's thing, and that one was killed in the committee. So, that was the biggest, that's the news, and then
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Well, I, but wait, there's more, if you'd like to hear more about what's coming up this week. But that's a
Go ahead.
Let's see which device I have this on. Why don't you talk about the other piece of correspondence?
I was going to say, whilst Selectwoman Gillen is pulling that up, we do have the NHMA legislative bulletin in our packet, as well as the copy of the fact sheet Q and A from the Newfields Extra Community Forest Property Purchase. And that was it in the correspondence. I have one last piece, but I want you to finish your
All right. Tomorrow, at the State House, my committee is hearing change in the format of excavating and dredging permit applications, and I have not seen what that format is yet. HB 1218, relative to voting for municipal bonds, this one wants to make bond voting a simple majority, as opposed to the three fifths that we have now, is it three fifths?
Three fifths, yes, for us. Good bill, I like that one.
I like that one, too.
Sounds good.
Oh, okay, I'll bring your opinions to the discussion. Excuse me, and that's really, oh, one is relative to elected conservation commissions, allowing towns to adopt, that they want their commissions elected. Frankly, I think the harder you make it for somebody to be on a committee or commission, the less likely you are to get people to be on it. But that's my, that's how I'm going to start out looking at, unless they have a good reason, I don't
Agree with that, too.
Yeah. And then, there's the allowing or authorizing municipalities to stabilize rent. And that'll be fun. Yep, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. There's one other piece of correspondence that I received today that I've passed on to the town manager and the assistant town manager relative to Pearpoint Park, with some ideas and thoughts. So, Mr. Dean, I will task you with working with me to schedule this on a future agenda in February. I'm thinking most likely the last meeting in February, given what I know, what else we have to work on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. And with that, I will segue to board calendar. Our next meeting is February 12th. February 26th follows, and then, March 4th, and March 18th. So, that's 212, 226, 34, 318, and sandwiched within those are deliberative session this Saturday, February 3rd at 9:00 AM, High School Gym, and town election, March 12th, beginning at 7:00 AM at Talbot Gym.
Okay.
We good? Selectwoman Cowan, did you have anything else before we wrap up? Great, okay. I hope you feel better, and we'll see you on Saturday. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion's the second. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We stand adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16, and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.